This conference will now be recorded.
Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion. But there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board are welcome to do so during the Board's regularly scheduled meetings. We will go ahead and get started with Board Communications, Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to wax philosophical because I'm the first one. Every day I have three concerns. Global climate change, the widening gap between rich and poor, and species extinction, including the human species. So those are my guiding principles as I go forward. I look for ways to make a difference with that. And I just thought I would say that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Appreciate that sentiment. Commissioner Bangs?
I'll hold off until the regular meeting. I have a lot of paint on my hands and apparently it is messing with my mouse. And so I can't seem, so if I can't unmute myself or mute myself here soon. Anyhow, it's been a great day. It's a beautiful day. I'm glad to see all of these faces.
Good to see you too. Commissioner Webb?
I'll wait until the regular meeting.
Okay, I think keeping form, I will go ahead and wait till the regular meeting as well. Let's go ahead and discuss the formal agenda. Does anyone have any questions? Changes to the formal agenda as we have presented this evening? Dawn Boone, our county manager does.
Chair Quayle, members of the Board, one suggestion that I would have, and it's completely up to your Board, would be to, just for this moving, this meeting is to move the proclamation until after the business from the public, just to be able to take public comment before the proclamation because I know a number have signed up to speak about the proclamation.
Any objection to that from the members of, okay, let's go ahead and do that and we'll make that change. We'll move the business from the public up before the proclamation. Any other comments, questions about the agenda? Commissioner Thompson?
Mr. Chair, did I understand that we were going to remove item 14, the Planning Commissioner appointment from the agenda? Is that a possibility?
I think that that is something that would probably make a lot of sense. Give us an opportunity to continue the recruitment for the Planning Commission and have an opportunity to actually meet and interview people that have applied.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Well, that would make sense to me. And I think we're still in the process of, I would say, truing up after the pause of our planning department efforts. So I think it's just a good idea to hold off on that. I appreciate the hard work of staff. I continue to plead for the goodwill of the candidates who are bearing with us as we work through our process. What we want to have is a quality outcome. And I'd ask for their continued patience as we work through this.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Just a question for County Council, County Manager. Should we go ahead, leave it on the agenda, then have Gail address that? Or how do we want to proceed on this?
I would defer to County Manager, but I think it's perfectly acceptable to approve the agenda in the regular business meeting. And then when you come to number 14, the Planning Commission appointment, you do not have to take action. You can discuss your concerns and your process going forward.
Okay, County Manager?
So I agree with Joanne. I think the two options for the Board is, one, you can certainly remove it from the agenda and just know that staff will be bringing it back at a future date after concurrence with your Board. If you'd like to have staff give a little bit more background and detail on it, certainly we can do that as part of the regular agenda and then not take any action on it. So either of those are fine. From a staff perspective, we would support pulling it also if that's the will of the Board, so.
What's the will of the Board? Would it be okay just to pull it?
I would prefer that. I think, I think we've certainly heard a lot about it. I think it makes sense to pull it now before we continue further public discussion, but I'm willing to defer to my colleagues on this.
I'm all right for pulling it. I would like to have a timeline of when it's coming back though, if it's possible. But I'm okay if I don't have that timeline as long as it's, you know, we're going to be discussing this again in the future anyway. So I'm unconcerned, I guess, if we pull it this evening.
Commissioner Webb, thoughts?
I'm fine with pulling it for this evening.
Okay, I think we go ahead and pull it. And then I can go ahead and just address it when we do the agenda approval. Just mentioned that we've made the decision to pull item 14. It will come back at a later date. County Manager?
Chair Quayle, members of the Board, I just wanted to let Commissioner Bangs know that staff will provide a timeline for that, just for your comment and your feedback to us. And we will do that by the end of the week and get your input, so.
Okay. That sounds good. Anything else on the agenda this evening? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our topics. We have the legislative update. We have Phil joining us by phone. Phil, take it away.
Yes, thank you Commissioners, and thank you the staff and Commissioners for allowing me to join you again tonight. So we are nearing the final day, days of session. They are moving at rapid speed and things are being posted within an hour or two. So we're trying to keep up. The big items that are on the agenda to move forward on our Priority Bill Report is one of the levy bill. So that is Senate Bill 622 that passed the Senate today. And it is on its way, on very fast pace, to the House. That bill, as a reminder, funds the levy program at $10 million and allow, and in that bill, which I believe we are all very appreciative of, is that there is a line item that specifies that 60% of those funds must be spent outside of the Portland area or the Portland metro area in rural areas. And so that is good news for us. I know that is the bill that the county submitted testimony on. In addition to that, I want to keep on the conversation of levies because they literally about five, 10 minutes ago, or 10 minutes before this meeting, posted the capital construction meeting materials for tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. In there, they're funding the levy program at $15 million. And those dollars could be used for levy inspection, accreditation, certification, and repairs. Now, I want to be really careful because where the complication with bonding or capital construction bills are that sometimes they are funding the policy bills that are moving forward and sometimes they are in addition to the policy bills. So since I only had 10 minutes before this call to start going through the paperwork, I am going to try to sit down this evening, print everything out, and try to connect the dots on whether this is in addition to the $10 million incentive bill 622 or 10 of the million in there is part of this 15. Either way, I believe that is a step in the right direction, I believe, on these projects. They also did not sweep the Tidegate funds. That was a concern on the front end of session when we were talking budget to deficit. The Tidegate program had an ending fund balance that in the budget crunch, often those ending fund balances get swept to help balance the state budget. That did not occur and they kept that intact. And so that is another, a good piece of news for us, I believe. In addition, there is a $10 million allocation in the Lottery Bond Authorization Bill for county fair capital improvements. And I would be remiss if I, if we did not pause and say that a lot of this work is probably,
And so DHS has got a role in this in the sense of they are go are going to be working with local governments to create safe air quality facilities during fire, fire, um, during fires. Um, they, every agency, I mean, the military departments in this PUC, I will get you a summary of that as well. Um, I will get you the final summary so that I'm not sending you something that's obsolete one hour later. And so, um, I should have that tomorrow. Once it reaches the House floor, I'm pretty confident it won't change after that.
Okay, I, I, I just see one huge concern that's popping into my head is who's going to pay for it? Because is it going to be like, that's my concern. Is it going to be cutting out of our county budget for all of this? Um, like where's the money coming from for all of those positions? That seems like, that seems like a lot. Um, and as you're saying, it's local positions.
Yes, and a lot of that in this bill, that was a question in way capital construction. And if it's helpful, I'm going to cut the capital construction agenda and, um, and send you a link. So it's only this bill's discussion. Um, I'll just say, uh, uh, it was a robust conversation and heated at times. Um, and so I will cut that, uh, segment of the committee. So you only, when you click it, it starts right at that bill and it ends right at that bill. And you can hear that conversation. They did ask the questions about what it's funding. And if I recall it correctly, a lot of this is going to be general fund, um, this biennium. Um, but when the follow-up question was how is it going to get paid for moving forward? Um, they punted in the sense of, uh, that's a great question and the next legislature will have to consider that. So I think part of that, and that was a really shot from the hip answer commissioner. Um, but I do think that part of the reason why they're doing that too, is they want to see what the agencies come back in rulemaking to see how, what is the true fiscal, um, dependent upon what the rules are going to be for implementation. But on the fiscal statement, a lot of it, I think we're, I, I'll finalize, but I guess I thought it was almost a $200 million fiscal and almost all of it was general fund.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions for Phil? Uh, just to, uh, follow up Phil with your, going back to the levy bill, the 622. If it's anything like the last regular session, they had, uh, gone to ways and means with a $10 million fund and it ended up becoming a $15 million fund. And that really is, like you were right to give credit to Senator Johnson. Uh, because it was her efforts that boosted that to $15 million last time around. Unfortunately, COVID hit and that program was suspended. And that's why I think this is kind of a, an effort to, to make that, uh, uh, whole once again. And I think the one thing I'd like you to check out is to make sure that it's a grant program, not a loan program. They had started this as a loan program back in 2019. They've got back it to be a grant program. And I hope that that's the way that it remain because that's pretty important to smaller communities, rural communities. Where 60% of this is supposed to be targeted. Uh, they can afford loans, they can afford grants and, and, and they're granted, I think that there's a 20% match for those grants. Uh, but that's very important that that's, that's part of this program, but that's great news.
No problem. And Commissioner, I have that answer. Actually, it does say $15 million for levy, uh, inspection, accreditation, certification, and repair project grants.
Great, super.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And if there's any other projects that any commissioners want me to track down in this paperwork, I'm happy to do that. Um, uh, just, just let me know, um, and I'm, uh, I'll get, get to it.
Yeah, I would love to think that it's 25 million, but I got a feeling it's 15 million.
Yeah, I know. I know. That's like, I always am hesitant.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the legislative update, Phil. Have a great night.
All right, you too, Commissioner. Thank you for all you do.
We'll go ahead and move on to the public health update and Margot Lolich, our public health director is with us. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Um, so I think I want to start with, um, just clarifying any, uh, concerns you might have about our risk, um, level that we're at and what that means. Um, yes, we are having an increase of cases. This is not surprising. And it's the trend of increasing, um, household contacts as well as work sites. Um, in my conversations with various employers who have called over the last week asking, um, what to do if, um, uh, an employee has reported that they are positive. One of the questions I ask is about vaccination. And what we're seeing not only in the reported cases and looking back at their vaccination history, but in those anecdotal conversations is that it, the vast majority of cases we're seeing right now are those who are unvaccinated. So the next step in our targeted outreach is with, um, employers, right? Meeting them where they are, going to them, making vaccines available at a time and a place that's convenient for them. The good news is our, you know, uh, uh, twice a week vaccination events on Tuesdays and Thursdays are continuing through the end of this month. And while our second doses, um, are decreasing for obvious reasons, um, we are seeing on average 20 to 25 new first doses, which is fantastic. And it's individuals who are, um, have been on the fence or are just kind of fatigued like so many others. Or they've just seen that enough people have been vaccinated and that it probably is safe. Um, so this is all very good news. Um, even though we potentially, it looks like we could move into a higher risk level. It's status quo. We're staying in the lower risk level. We're almost 63% to our own county's 65% threshold. And we, you know, they, the, uh, state did accept our, uh, equity plan and sent back some accommodations about that last week. And Oregon is at what 68.9% to reach 70% threshold. So we're just in a holding pattern right now, and I think we're going to get to one or the other threshold. I think Oregon's a little bit sooner, but in the meantime, we'll just keep vaccinating. Um, some of our, my standing meetings are just continuing, obviously decreasing through the summer. But we just had our, uh, twice a month call with, um, the superintendents this morning and school nurses. And already talking about what we need to have in place in preparation for the next school year. Um, we are, the second week in July, public health will move to vaccinating in our clinic as part of routine operations as well as our outreach and then also do providing testing four days a week. Um, as we know, um, contacts and travelers are the ones who are wanting to be tested most, uh, frequently at this time. Um, I think that's it for me at this point. I know the state's doing a bunch, a lot of work to update its guidance. The local public health authorities are looking forward to, um, some of the, uh, guidance changing around investigations. OHA is continuing to support us with case investigation and contact tracing, which we greatly appreciate. Um, they do an excellent job. It supports us so we can continue doing our local work as well as just maintain fidelity and integrity and consistency to how cases are investigated and monitored. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for, okay, Commissioner Banks has a question.
Um, my question isn't actually in regards to vaccines, but it is in regards to our county testing process. Are those sites still open?
Yes, yes. And, um, we are working, we have been working, um, with Columbia Memorial Hospital because they're, they have been doing a lot of the testing. Um, and I'm working with Jared on their staff. Um, and, uh, we will be putting out a communication, Tom Bennett and I actually am in a comms meeting tomorrow. Um, uh, informing the public that they can come to public health. We are no longer going to be doing the drive-through at the household hazardous waste site. Um, and, um, OHSU is continuing to come once a week. We'll decide if that's necessary to continue that in July. Um, really the focus not only, um, here in Clotsop County, but other places is to start to make our response to COVID more routine, right? Along with other communicable diseases that we manage within the community. It's still a pandemic. It's still serious and there's still a lot of unknowns as we move into the fall and winter. Um, but, um, we need to start operationalizing it in a way that, um, is, uh, more, more routine.
Okay. Um, my, my question also then in regards to the testing and the site testing. Um, I had an email from a constituent recently, um, who, who had a concern, uh, they had a false positive. Um, she asked for a second test because there was a whole bunch of description as to why. Um, but her, her blanket concern was, um, economic impact on the family. Uh, if say somebody had a false positive. So do we have a process in place if somebody tests positive? Are we able to test their sample a second time? Um, is that feasible financially? Is that feasible? Like, because I'm just looking as from now into the future. COVID isn't disappearing, um, to my, you know, layman's knowledge at this point. Um, but looking from now into the future, can we do something for these, these folks that, you know, if they test positive? It, it's a two weeks. I mean, that's two weeks of no work and, you know.
Right. So the current guidance is that a positive is a positive. Part of testing is doing very good screening in advance to determine their actual risk. If someone, there, yes, there can be second testing, but it's, uh, a follow-up testing. But it's not indicated in most situations and it's not something that the Oregon Health Authority is building into its protocols. Um, and that's what we follow is investigative guidelines and testing guidelines from the Oregon Health Authority. I would also, and I'm, I'm bringing this up because it relates to three different calls I had last week, um, around testing and the issue of quarantine. And my question would be, is that individual vaccinated, right? Um, because there are people who are vaccinated who still want to get tested. Um, but if they're vaccinated and they've completed that vaccination, whether it's the two-dose series or the single dose Johnson and Johnson, they actually don't need to quarantine. So we do have some breakthrough cases, um, but it's very, very few. And, um, that is being monitored. In fact, yesterday in the state call, the question was asked if OHA was going to start developing a dashboard, reporting more specifics about breakthrough cases. And they are in the process of developing that at this time.
And, and I apologize, I should have sent or asked these questions via email. I don't, I don't like dive bombing you in a, in a public.
Oh, it's okay.
Meeting. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but I wanted to follow up just in, in general of in the future. And just for us here in Clotsop County, is there any way that we can clarify all of these new rules and regulations that are constantly changing? I know we have our dashboard, but, I mean, a lot of us and myself included are still stuck into the, you know, rules that were current two months ago. Um, I'm, I, and I, I don't want to read 40 pages. But, but is there a way to, to be able to simplify and share this information with our, our community in regards to these new COVID quarantine versus not quarantine, having to close your business versus not closing your business situation? I just, I just want to simplify it for folks as much as possible and, you know, frankly for myself.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Banks. Appreciate that feedback. Um, I would say two things. One, um, we're all challenged by it, even those of us who are living and working in this on a daily basis. Um, and we spent quite a bit of time, uh, and many, many emails going back and forth all the way to the governor's office yesterday, trying to get clarification around the risk levels. So it's challenging for all of us and I do believe everyone is also at the same time doing their due diligence. Um, in terms of a lot of our social media messaging, I think we are continuing to put out, well, I know we're putting out a consistent and accurate information. Um, in terms of guidance with work sites and workplaces, I think, I appreciate your recommendation and we can revisit that as, um, a communications team and see what we can do to improve that messaging. Um, and of course we get phone calls and we welcome them. And, um, I will be very honest, I don't think there's any one of us working in public health who's dealing with this every day that doesn't have multiple tabs open on our desktops, um, and having to say, you know, hang on for a moment, let me look that up. Uh, because the information is, is changing so rapidly, but we'll try to make it more succinct and, uh, and, um, user-friendly for the public.
Thank you. And I, I just want to clarify, I really appreciate everything that you're doing and your, your group is doing. And it's like wrestling a bear, um, or trying to eat an elephant. It is a giant project and I appreciate how organized that our county and yourself has faced this project. And, and thank you for just bearing with me.
Oh, of course.
Commissioner Thompson?
Amen to that. Let's keep it simple and easy for people concise. If someone is afraid that they need a COVID test, what telephone number can they call to get good information? Or where can they go to do that?
Same place they've been going all along, 325-8500. It's staffed every day, Monday through Friday, with volunteers who receive the updated information every single day regarding testing, um, and, uh, where to get vaccinations. And every week when the state sends its updated list of registered providers, all of that information goes to our public information, uh, center. And, um, all that information is then updated for the staff who, um, receive those calls. So, uh, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that repeated public service announcement. My hope is that repetition is in fact the heart of learning and thank you again for your fine work.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for our county health director? I echo what Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Banks have just said. We really appreciate the hard work of the entire department. Um, and, and especially the outreach. I know going to where people are, it has been, uh, it's been something that you have really exemplified and strive to do and working with the chambers of commerce and identifying businesses that might need to have some of these pop-up clinics. Uh, I think that's, that's definitely the, the, the way to go in the mode of the future as people wind down the mass vaccination, um, clinics. It's going to be an effort to try to get to where people are and appreciate you doing that.
You're welcome. And if you don't mind, I, I would, um, I think, uh, what you said is a segue into giving recognition of that partnership and that outreach. Next week, we have an event in Cannon Beach in which, um, uh, it's all day. Our, our two primary CBOs have events. We're staffing an event, um, that's being hosted in Seaside. Um, but there's also an event that's being hosted in Cannon Beach. And so our colleagues from OHA are deploying one of their regional teams to staff that. And yet our local medical reserve corps is supporting that event. So it's, it's really, it's, it's a convergence of all of these partnerships coming together to serve the communities. And, um, so I just wanted to, to bring attention to that.
Commissioner Webb?
Margot, have, have we seen any evidence that tourists are coming into our vaccination spots?
That's a great question. Um, we don't ask that question on the consent form. Um, uh, you know, I was wondering that last week, just we had a, a, a small pop-up event in Cannon Beach. And that wasn't the case, right? I think, uh, what, what we're seeing, and again, I don't have data on this, but, um, are people really wanting to travel? And so they're getting vaccinated so they can travel, um, will vaccinate anyone regardless of where they're from. And, um, but I think it's still mostly local folks. Um, and for example, um, this isn't tourist, but, uh, one question triggers another thought. But as the processing plants, the fish processing plants, you know, they rotate their employees, they're contacting us now routinely. And so we're, we're just making sure that, that people are getting vaccinated who are coming in and new and haven't previously been recognized in our operations.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Margot. Appreciate the update. We'll move on to our next item, which is the North Coast Business Park land development feasibility. We have 25 minutes scheduled for this, but we only have 20 minutes left in the, uh, in the work session. So we'll, uh, we'll move briskly. I'll turn it over to Monica.
I will talk as quickly as possible. Um, so at your meeting on May 18th, staff along with McKinsey and Ecological Land Services and our, um, Realtor came before you to talk about the findings from the study that McKinsey had done. And from that, they said that there was a proposed 30 acres that could be developed based on utilizing the, uh, total gross acres of approximately 131 to develop, um, to develop, uh, the land out there at North Coast Business Park. Um, they provided you with three different options. Option 1A would essentially develop one large area that what made up that 30.6 acres. Um, it would provide you with the potential of building square footage of approximately 410,000 square feet. And that would provide you with the potential property tax revenue over a 20-year period of between 9.9 and 14.3 million and create an estimated 400 to 465 jobs. Option 1B was to still develop that single large acreage, um, but use that for a portion of that, approximately 15 acres for the public works facility. That would then, uh, give you the potential building square footage of approximately 178,000 square feet and property tax revenue between 4.2 and 6.1 million over a 20-year period and the creation of approximately 170 to 200 jobs. Um, the third option would be to develop three smaller lots, approximately nine, six and 11 and a half acres in size, but a total square bit, the square footage of buildings of approximately 402,000 square feet and potential 20-year tax revenue between nine and a half million and 13.9 million with, um, again, 400 to 465 jobs created. So, um, they also presented in that report, the estimated infrastructure costs to develop that area out there. And those costs were between 6.1 and 6.2 million dollars. Um, in the current or in this upcoming 21, 22 fiscal year, um, the industrial revolving fund has approximately 3.2 million dollars in funds available for development of county, county lands that are zoned for industrial use. And, and this fund was created by the board back in November of 2000. And it has pursuant to ORS 275.318, it has monies that are available to be dispersed, um, by the consent of the Board of Commissioners for improvements such as engineering, rehabilitation, construction, maintenance, um, or pre-project planning costs for development. So those funds, um, are available and they are approximately 3.2 million. So, um, something else that, uh, your board is working on with staff is the, um, public works facility assessment. And at the meeting that is scheduled for July 14th, staff along with a separate McKinsey team will be coming before you again, um, presenting the findings from the work that's been done there. And, um, one of those sites that is being looked at for potential for the public works facility is the North Coast Business Park. And so prior to, um, us coming before you in July 14th and following the May, um, 18th meeting, we just wanted to come back before you present you with some more information and kind of talk about the next steps. See if you have any questions. Since that last meeting, um, some of the information, we had a little time to, to review it some more, think about it. Um, and, and just kind of have, have further discussion about what those next steps might look like. And, um, some of those might be, uh, what would it be if you just decided to sell the property as is? And so if you were to do that in conversations with our Realtor, you would be looking at selling the, um, usable acreage, um, at a rate of about a dollar 50 to $2 per square foot. And that would generate a potential income of between 1.7 and 2.4 million. Something else, um, to consider would, if it was an option, if there was land available to trade approximately eight acres, um, up in the, uh, northeast corner of one of the properties. There's about eight acres up there that can't be utilized for mitigation due to the look, the, the location of it. And the development cost, um, to develop that all on its own and to, um, and to extend the infrastructure up to that portion as well, um, just increase the cost of the development. So there's the potential to, um, uh, segregate that out and, um, and, and do a potential trade for property that we might be able to get mitigation credits out of, therefore potentially increasing, um, the, the, uh, 30 acres to something more. Um, the, the third thing to consider is mitigating onsite, um, as was discussed, to develop the 30 acres. And then using some of those revolving funds to pay for some of the infrastructure improvements. Um, again, we don't have enough funds to pay for all of them. And so if you were to pay for some, then you could increase the sale price, um, by up to about $4 to $5.50 per square foot, um, increasing your potential income to 2.4 to 4.4 million. And then the fourth option would be to continue, um, utilizing county staff resources to seek out grant opportunities for additional infrastructure investments, um, beyond what the county has in the revolving fund. And then complete that full infrastructure build-out and then try and market and sell it that way. Um, the potential sale price would be between $6 and $8 a square foot of usable acres. And, um, your, your potential income would be between 1.7 and 4.4 just because again, the amount that you would be looking at investing in it. So, um, so those are, those are just some more things for you to consider. And, um, again, like I said, we just wanted to provide you with another opportunity to ask questions. There's a lot of information that we've presented you with, um, over the last couple of months. Um, in addition to the last year as we've been having these conversations. And so just, um, here to answer anything that you might have and, and if Don has anything more that he would like.
Don?
Uh, Chair Quayle and members of the board, thanks, Monica, for that overview. Um, so I just thought I would give you a little bit of my perspective, um, going through this, this process. Um, since I've been with the county for a couple of years now, and this was one of the first projects that was placed on my to-do list. You know, I've, I believe, um, that the decision in front of the board is, is really what's the best way to have this, this property de-developed. And, and my, my view is, is that the private sector is the key to ultimately developing this project. So then it comes down to, you know, is it in, in the counties and the public's best, best interest at this point to sell the property as is? Um, and there's ways we can do that to, 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 to ensure that that is the best, um, option or to invest in some of the infrastructure and then sell it. Or the long game would be to be, you know, really develop the entire site with all of the infrastructure. But that would require a level of planning and project management and really commitment from the county that would be a challenge for, for, for Clotsop County. Um, so, and I think that is the, is the most risky, um, of those options. And so, you know, I think that this is what it's going to come down to is just, um, does the board agree that the private sector is really in, is best positioned to develop the site? And then it's just what's the timing of that and what infrastructure might go into it? So.
Commissioner Webb?
Um, I, thank you. I, I completely support, um, what our county manager has just said. Uh, as you all know, um, I've been extraordinarily critical of this whole enterprise from the very beginning. Um, the, one of the questions I have is, um, that we have a, we, we now have a Realtor on board who I understand, uh, Don, am I right, is now handling a number of property issues, acquisition, et cetera, for us. Um, but to what extent has this present situation been marketed? Has he spent any money at all on marketing these sites?
Not to, uh, um, I, I can't speak to like, um, like his time or anything like that, but at this point in time, there have just been conversations. They've posted signs out there. Um, he's had a, a number of conversations with developers, but some of those conversations have hinged on kind of what the, the Board of Commissioners are, um, going to choose to do. So that way they can kind of. to do so that way they can kind of talk about, all right, this is the decision that's been made, this is the sale price that we're looking at. Um, we do have, um, some marketing materials that, um, he has given us as an example to, to put out there, but again, we haven't really tried to market it because what, what is the price that it's going to be, um, offered at?
I, I understand that. That's one reason. I mean, I'd really, uh, like us to maybe get robust, make a decision about, about what the package is that we'd like to offer, uh, and get on it. Uh, you don't sell industrial land with a sign instantly, uh, and so we'd have to do some very widespread, uh, market analysis, um, which I think given our housing affordability issues and our extraordinarily low unemployment rate, et cetera, it's going to be a tough sell. So I think we ought to, uh, talk to him about being as, um, as, uh, as clear and attractive as we possibly can be financially. Um, the good news is that as soon as we sell this property, it goes on our tax rolls, which is to me, it's, it's, that's been the objective the whole time for twenty years. Uh, and, um, and so if we can come up with a really terrific offer, uh, that might impel somebody, um, to want to start a business or probably relocate and expand a business, um, at a super attractive point, um, uh, I actually, um, I'm actually very against, uh, mitigation off-site. I just think that from an environmental quality standpoint, mitigation off-site doesn't do anything for, because you have s- specific species of both flora and fauna, uh, in wetlands, um, and it's very difficult to replace them, uh, at another location. So to me, that's, you write off the wetlands and maybe with, with some of the wetlands, you create a, I don't know, a park or, or, or some such thing. Uh, but I would just suggest that we sit down with our agent and talk about, tell us what, you know, he, I assume he's probably already seen this document, which thank you very much, incidentally. Uh, Monica, I felt this was a very clear report. I really, really appreciated it. Um, this is the first great analysis I've seen on this. So, um, I just say let the expert guy come in. He's going to make a, a very nice payday, um, if he can sell this. Uh, and so I'd love to see his recommendations about what kind of, uh, parameters we should be working in. And then I'd like to see a very vigorous marketing analysis, very, a marketing plan. And probably to do this, you know, sooner rather than later and make it as simple as possible.
County Manager?
Um, I just want to, uh, Commissioner Webb, members of the board, I just wanted to, uh, to suggest that one of the options moving forward is to have an executive session to, to really talk about the property sale details, um, in a more, um, in a setting where we can have, um, Brad at the table with us and kind of walk through what his strategy would be, um, and, um, some of the details and, um, as, as, as really a next step. I think from staff's perspective, to, to reinforce Commissioner Webb's, um, thought about sooner, the better. I think staff concurs with that, um, completely, so.
And I would certainly welcome that, uh, executive session as well. I see Commissioner Thompson and then Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to put it in simpler terms, layman's terms. Yes to an executive session, yes to marketing soon, glad staff agrees, I think the commission agrees. What I want to hear about is the sweet spot where, where we get the maximum amount for Clotsop County taxpayers. That's the outcome we want to see in terms of tax revenue going forward in the shortest possible time with the least, the least possible continued investment of, of tax dollars. So that's my sweet spot. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks?
Um, yeah, so I'm looking at the twenty-year cumulatives, um, and I, I, I see, you know, the numbers, the numbers, the, the number story. Um, but what I'm curious about is I feel like this decision is also kind of married to the, the relocation decision. And I was hoping or wishing to request a work session where we present both side-by-side, um, to see the cost analysis of the relocation for the two different sites, to see the, the, and balance it out, because I feel like one decision is married to the other a little bit, and I would like to see them both side-by-side. Um, and maybe that's in a work session, or maybe that's just me meeting with county manager and Monica, I don't know. Um, but I'm hesitant to pick a, pick a plan right now when I don't know for sure how much the other plan is going to cost us. And so I, I want to know what the other plan is going to cost us before I pick a, a plan in, in this, in this location. Does that make sense?
Commissioner Banks, um, Chair Quila, that does make sense, and we will, um, have that com-, uh, conversation with you, Commissioner Banks, but we'll also have it with the board, because that will be part, um, of the overlay about the path forward, so.
And, and just to, just an ask, and I know it's a lot of, a lot of work, but, um, could we do also an op-, like, and it's not an option that I am going to confirm that I am pursuing, but can we also lay out how much it would cost and, and the pros and the cons for if the county facilities stayed where they were at? Um, I feel like that there's been a push for, from some constituents that, that are curious, you know? We do need to do work on that facility in order to use it in the future. And so to do a cost analysis on the potential so that we're fully transparent.
Um, yes, Commissioner Banks, thank you for that, and, and staff has included that in our work, and so we will be prepared to present that as part of the conversation.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussions on this? I think we've got, uh, just a couple of minutes before our regular meeting. Do we want to take a little break? Okay, we'll take just a few minutes break. We'll start back up here in three, four minutes. And, uh, Commissioner Webb, we'll just wait just a few minutes. And Reba Owen, I see you're here. I know that, uh, county manager will be addressing some of your letters. Are you going to speak? Public comment?
Yes, she has signed up to speak, Commissioner Quila.
Okay, thank you. Perfect.
Oh, there, okay, I got it. Um, yeah, I'd like to get my two minutes in.
Okay. We got you. All right, uh, we're ready to go here. Let's go ahead and start the regular session. The Board of Commissioners, as the governing body of Clotsop County, all county service districts for which this body so acts, is now meeting in regular session. Teresa, can we have the roll call?
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Banks?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm here.
Um, I do not see Commissioner Toyoka. Uh, Commissioner Quila?
Here. And I don't see Commissioner Toyoka as well there. We'll move on to the agenda approval. Is there motion, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mister Chair, we had discussed in the work session some changes to the agenda. Do you, do we need to specify those for the record, counsel? We do. So who does that? Does the chair?
I, I can go ahead and say that we did make a, uh, a decision to remove item fourteen from the agenda this evening. Um, I think it begs that we will spend some more, uh, time and bring that back as a, at a later date, so, uh, we will remove item fourteen from the agenda this evening. And then, uh, make a motion to approve the agenda.
Sir, I think the county manager had suggested that we would take public comment before acting on the proclamation, and I think that's a further amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson, for reminding me. Yes, we are going to move the business from the public since we have a number of people that have, uh, asked to testify, um, before the proclamation or on the proclamation. We'll move that, um, in, uh, in advance of the proclamation discussion, um, so that will be another change to the agenda this evening.
So given those two changes to, to the agenda, I, I would, um, move adoption of the amended agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to move adoption of the amended agenda. All those in favor signify with an eye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll go ahead and move right now to the business from the public. And Teresa?
Um, did you want to read the? This is an opportunity for-
I can go ahead and read this in advance. Opportunity for anyone, two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda except public hearings or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. So, for the board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
Yes. Uh, Reba Owen?
Okay, Reba, you'll have two minutes to speak.
Okay, you should all have packets that I sent to you. The last week of May, I sent a letter to you commissioners regarding your obligation under the Beach-
Reba, excuse me, could you, uh, say, state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, and I have it right up here. Reba Owen, Post Office Box four-four-eight, Warrington, Oregon. Am I eating up my two minutes? Please, don't let me do that. I also have a cabin at seven-nine-one-two-four Tide Avenue and have had that cabin for seventy years. Last week, the last week of May, I sent you all a letter, you should have packets of that about the law. I'm concerned about the public access to Cove Beach, Falcon Cove, that it's reached a very difficult level. And I also sent you copies of the Beach Bill, which I maintain, uh, requires that the county or governmental bodies, uh, keep those public accesses open. That bill went into effect in nineteen-sixty-seven, and to my knowledge, the county has done nothing to keep those open. And now it's a problem of, of public safety. You all know that through, that two children died there over a year and a half ago. I've maintained that if the county had maintained that access properly, the, the first responders might have been able to get there a little bit sooner, maybe not, because it was a very difficult situation. What happens is the county tells us that it's the parks' responsibility. The Parks Department, when we call them, they say, no, it's the county's responsibility. I think that's called passing the buck. Uh, what, after the kids drowned, one of the local, uh, architects built some very nice stairs down there, which immediately got washed out when we had those King Tides, and the stairs were left on the beach. Well, rather than recycle those, the Parks Department came down and cut them up, threatened the builder, and is now threatening to remove the Richmond Access stairs. There's three accesses, Columbia, Richmond, and Clotsop. Those all used to be roads that went down to the beach when I was young. Uh, so the, I, I'm just maintaining that this is a really dangerous situation. The population at our beach has almost doubled or quadrupled because of the, uh, short-term rentals. So there's a lot more people that are being endangered by these accesses that aren't being maintained. On Sat-, on Sunday, there was a call from one of the residents that somebody had built a large dangerous fire, bonfire at the end of the Columbia Beach Access. So-
Thank you, Zoe, and thank you for your comments. We do have a number of speakers this evening. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, Carolyn Eady?
Thank you, Reba. Caroline? Give your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes to speak.
Um, you are certainly serving in a challenging and confusing time. First and foremost is this pandemic that's taken half a million people, and it is, it's sort of first and foremost on everybody's mind, you can't avoid it. Every evening you see it on the news, floods and fires and, and we are in the point now where I believe we've had good leadership by our governor, and I would say on the same point, from this body, I have been impressed. But there is, um, another very serious, um, crisis that I want to call to your attention. Now, that would be really my primary reason for talking this evening is that I want you to not neglect this environmental crisis we are facing, climate disruption. We see it every night on the news. We can't escape it, but there's also good news. We are now have the, um, cost of solar and wind is plummeting, wind power, the cost of batteries for electric cars are less. Before the end of this decade, we're going to see electric-powered trucks and buses. So in conclusion, as- as the status as, rather, I would say, as the states in the 2020 Resolution and Order, this board has committed to educate the public regarding this crisis and to take positions which will responsibility for the people have a responsibility for reducing their carbon footprint. Thank you very much for your service.
Caroline, can I get your name and address again for the record?
Carolyn Eady. E-A-D-Y, 1990, Southeast, excuse me, Sheridan Street, Astoria, 97103.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Teresa, who's next?
Okay, Tony Johnson.
Tony?
Yeah, hello. So I had the impression I wasn't going to be limited maybe to the two minutes because I was speaking on behalf of the-
Tony, I think you are the one speaker that's going to speak to the proclamation, correct?
That is true, and I could do that after public comment if you wish.
Let's go ahead, and Teresa, we'll go ahead, and Tony's going to be provided time when we actually address the proclamation. So we'll move on to the next. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Gina Rife?
I don't see anybody unmuting.
I'll move on to Devon Abing.
Devon? And is it star six to unmute yourself? Teresa, star six?
Yes, if they're having problems unmuting, hit star six.
Yeah, if you're having trouble, if you're on the phone, star six.
There, can you hear me?
Yes, Devon. Name and address for the record, please.
Devon Abing, address is 805 Glasgow Avenue, Astoria, Oregon. I'm calling in support of the proclamation. I'm a Chinook Tribal Council member. And I'm asking the, I'm asking your guys for your guys' support in our recognition effort. It's been a long time. It's been a long fight. We've had many elders have passed, and, you know, we're seeking we're seeking justice to right the wrongs of the past. And, you know, we're asking that you Commissioners can provide support in our efforts to seek our recognition. And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Devon.
Yes, thank you. Dawn Abing?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Yes, Dawn?
Okay, my name is Dawn Abing, A-B-I-N-G, address is 68339th Street, Astoria, Oregon, 97103. I speak also for my Chinook Nation, only to ask that you please consider that you represent all the citizens in Clatsop Chinook land that is now occupied by a great majority of people from other races of the countries. But nonetheless, we are your constituents, and we are asking for relief from the federal government, but we need your support. You're the voice of the people in Clatsop. And this and our voice, our people have been silenced for 170 years. I don't know how anyone can survive 100 years, 170 years of cultural genocide. And I speak from the Culture Committee, and I see the sadness in all of our eyes that we get thrown away, thrown aside by the federal government. And they fail to recognize the treaty that we had signed at Tansy Point many, many years ago, well, 170 years ago. They have not ratified that. We want federal recognition so that we can be of a positive contribution to the entire communities within Clatsop land. And I know that Commissioner Weaver knows this is a passionate cause and concern from our family. So I indulge, I hope, that the Commission understands the importance of their pen to the proclamation to restore, to have the federal government restore our treaty status so that we may be one of the 574 recognized tribes in Turtle Island, what you now call the United States of America. This I say. God peace to you all.
Thank you, Dawn.
Kizzy Adams?
Kizzy?
Hello. My name's Kizzy Adams. I live at 805 Glasgow Avenue, Astoria, Oregon. I'm a proud Chinook Tribal member. My family and I are Clatsop County residents. I just wanted to express my full support for the resolution. It's well past time that the Chinook be counted amongst the other 574 federally recognized tribes of this country. I'm 43 years old, and all my life, plus the generations before me, have been fighting for this. I feel that federally recognized Chinook would be an important boost to our struggling coastal economy. And I just want to thank you for taking the time to hear me out.
Thank you. Leanne Dag?
Leanne? Leanne, star six, if you're having trouble unmuting.
Okay, Rachel Cushman?
Rachel?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Name and address for the rec-
I'll start with a Chinican address. So hi, I'm Rachel Cushman, Ni'kau, Ni'kuk, Kwakwamw, and Tsipuk Chinook Indian Nation. In Tsipuk, Kuk, Kuk, Waukaukam, Willapau, Chanoq. My name is Rachel Cushman. My address is 2291 Bridgeway Drive, Eugene, Oregon. I'm a councilwoman of the Chinook Indian Nation, the five westernmost Chinookan-speaking tribes at the mouth of the Columbia River. I listed them in my introduction. I'm a direct descendant of Clatsop Chief Wasilso, also known by his pen name Washington. My grandfather was one of two negotiators and signers for the Clatsop Tribe of Chinooks at the Antarctic Treaties at Tansy Point in 1851, and I'm proud of that fact. I'm calling in to support, to ask you to support this resolution. It's well past time that Chinooks be counted amongst the federally recognized tribes. My family has been fighting since day one, obviously, because I am a descendant of hereditary chief. A federally recognized tribe would need protections for our people. We have, I have family members who are living in the area who, you know, are struggling, you know, struggling with access to healthcare, struggling to maintain our rights. You know, we have children who are being taken from homes, and the Indian Child Welfare Act doesn't pertain to us, but a federally recognized tribe, that wouldn't be the case. You know, there's nothing to lose for supporting this. There's a lot to gain because a lot of the protections and the economic opportunities would come into the struggling coastal economy. And I really, I really think that you should do the right thing and support this resolution. Thank you, Hi'au'au'au.
Thank you. Teresa?
That's it. And I don't know if we want to try Gina Rife one more time to see if she's on the line?
Gina?
Yes, Gina Rife. I live at 17 Northwest Calumia Avenue, Warrington, Oregon. Do you need my phone number?
No, no, this is fine.
Okay. Okay, but I'm here also to support the Chinook Nation. I'm also on the council. And I would just like to give my input. Like the rest, everybody else is there, it's fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's the end of the comments.
Well, thank you, everybody, for providing the public comment, and we'll go on to the next item of the agenda, which is the proclamation. And Tony, you are here with us, and I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it, and would ask that folks, you know, be as brief as possible, but also give me an idea if I need to wrap it up in 10, 15, 30 seconds, whatever it is. You know, it is my pleasure to represent the Chinook Indian Nation as the chairman, or elected chairman, of the Tribal Council. We've governed ourselves since 1924 under an elected form of government, and the current constitution we operate under was written in 1951. But as was stated earlier, the Chinook Indian Nation is made up of five tribes at the mouth of the Columbia River, two in Oregon, the Clatsop and Waukaukam, and three in Washington, the Lower Chinook, or excuse me, I said Waukaukam, two in Oregon, meaning Clatsop and Kathlamet, and three in Washington, meaning Lower Chinook, Waukaukam, and Willapau. Many of us are descended from more than one of those tribes. That includes myself, who is Waukaukam, Lower Chinook, and Clatsop. And I want to say clearly that we have over 800 enrolled members who are Clatsop descendants. So we feel very strongly, of course, about the territory and lands that you all are involved in governing, and thank you for the stewardship of them. You know, we had treaty negotiations in 1851 and in 1855. I won't bore you with the details, but what I do want to say is, both of those treaty negotiations asked the Chinook people to leave our territory. We refused to do that in 1851, and we refused to do that in 1855, and the truth is, we pay the price for that today. So that really is ultimately why the Chinook Indian Nation and our communities are not federally recognized, because we did not follow the whim of the government. But I would challenge anybody here that I think most all of you would make the same decision. You'd stay with your people, you'd stay with the bones of your ancestors, you'd stay in your own place. And so that is our reality. You know, we hired our first attorneys to fight this battle in the 1890s in Astoria. You know, we fought that ever since. We entered a system that was created by the federal government in 1978. We entered in 1979, a process to recognize tribes that was promised to be fair and timely. We went through that process for 21 years. I would say not fair or timely, but we were granted federal acknowledgement under that system in January of 2001. Unfortunately, 18 months later, with the intervention of a couple of entities, that was reversed 18 months later. So on July 5th of 2002, we received a call taking away our federal recognition again. This is obviously unbearable and has been awfully rough on the community. What I would say to all of you is, you know, Chinook as a community is more committed than anyone, I would argue, to enhancing all the resources of the area. You know, we ourselves have experienced being dislocated, you know, moved from territory, moved from our, you know, preferred village sites, whatever. I just want to assure everybody on this call that, you know, our community has that in our experience and has no interest in, you know, affecting anybody negatively in our fight for this justice. Waukaukam County and Pacific County have both passed similar strong resolutions to this one on our behalf in recent weeks. As was stated earlier, I really believe the biggest infusion that we could make to our struggle in coastal economies at the mouth of the Columbia River is a recognized Chinook Indian Nation, just even for employment in an Indian agency alone. I mean, in our own government and what have you. I suspect we'd be one of the largest employers. You know, we lost the region, I'll say, not just Chinook Indian Nation, $135 million based on our enrollment numbers just in the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan alone. That's, that money would have come to our community and obviously stayed in the community. And so just reminding folks of what I mean by infusions to the economy locally here. I'm going to end by saying, you know, 75% of the tribes in Oregon and 25% of the recognized tribes in Washington were not federally recognized 50 years ago. This is not a really unique situation we find ourselves in, a frustrating one, yes, but Indian country is a work in progress at best. And the proof of it is just that number. I mean, every tribe in western Oregon that is federally recognized today was not federally recognized 50 years ago. So I'm just asking you to support the resolution. Support your Chinook friends and neighbors to become, you know, the next, I'll say, 575th federally recognized tribe in this country. You know, let us stop this fight once and for all, and let us put our energy into actually moving forward like every other federally recognized tribe, and, you know, in support of the mission that, you know, you folks are working for and that the residents of our communities are compelled by. And I'll leave it there. I thank you for your time. Hi'au'au'au.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. Appreciate your comments, your passionate comments and the history and background. Commissioner Thompson had her hand up there. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, I don't want to interrupt you, but I could just hardly wait to make a motion. Are you ready, Mr. Chair? All right then. I would move to support the Resolution and Order proclaiming support for tribal recognition for the Chinook Indian Nation and authorize the Chair to sign.
I second that motion.
Moved and seconded to support the proclamation in support for tribal recognition for the Chinook Indian Nation. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye? All those opposed? Okay. I will go ahead. Thank you, Chair John, Commissioner Banks?
I just wanted to clarify that we were approving the amended, correct, proclamation?
Correct. I will go ahead. I will go ahead and read the proclamation.
Excellent.
Eye.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the Chinook Indian Nation is the sovereign nation of the five westernmost Chinookan-speaking constituent tribes: one, the Clatsop, two, the Kathlamet of present-day Oregon, and three, the Lower Chinook, four, Waukaukam and Willapa of what is now Washington State. And whereas the Chinook Indian Nation remain present at the mouth of what is now called the Columbia River and have made significant contributions to the exploration and early economy of Clatsop County. And whereas Clatsop County was named after the Clatsop Tribe memorializing the extraordinary hospitality they extended to the Lewis and Clark Expedition from 1805 to 1806. And whereas in 1811, the Chinook Indian Nation greeted, assisted, and procured food and fuel and were the primary source of furs for the people of Astoria, the first permanent American settlement west of the Rocky Mountains. This strong bond endures between the two communities today. And whereas the United States recognized the Chinook Indian Nation's tribes and bands during the Isaac Stevens Chalice River Treaty negotiations of 1855, but this treaty would have required the Chinook and other tribes to abandon the lands of their ancestors. Because of this requirement, the Chinook- Because of this requirement, the Chinook tribes and bands, as well as the Chehalis and Cowalts tribes, rejected the treaty. All tribes associated with this treaty council are now federally recognized, except for the Chinook. And whereas the Chinook Indian Nation was acknowledged as a federally recognized tribe by the Department of Interior on January 3rd, 2001, after a 21-year process within the Office of Federal Acknowledgement, it was rescinded 18 months later by the incoming administration. And whereas on May 5th, 2020, the North Coast Land Conservancy Transfer Conservatory transferred ownership of 18 acres of Neowana Point Habitat Preservation, the historic site of Neacoxie Village, to the Klatsep Mahalem Confederated Tribes. And whereas the Chinook Indian Nation continued to endure underfunded healthcare and inadequate education and housing opportunities that have been exacerbated by the global pandemic, the Chinook Indian Nation faced the COVID-19 mortality rate of indigenous people that is about 2.5 times that of white people and will not receive any of the billions of dollars in government aid that are allocated for federally recognized tribes. No testing supplies or vaccine allocations. And whereas the presence of Klatsep and other tribal people in Klatsep County remains strong and is integral to the community, Klatsep County youth reach out to local tribes to conduct school history projects. Community members visit the Klatsep County Historical Society's Heritage Museum to engage in exhibits that share the stories of the peoples of the Chinook Indian Nation. Local activists and tribal residents advocate for the protection, preservation, and recognition of tribal lands, culture, and history. And county leaders openly support the Chinook Indian Nation in obtaining federal recognition. And now therefore be it hereby resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Klatsep County, the important historical and continuing influence of the Chinook Indian Nation in the Pacific Northwest and provide support of the Chinook Indian Nation and their efforts to solidify their federal status with the understanding that such efforts shall not include resource rights, including fishing and hunting rights. Dated this 23rd day of June, 2021. Thank you so much, Chair Johnson and everyone that testified.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it and best of luck with your meeting tonight and look forward to seeing all of you in the community.
Thank you. Likewise. We'll move on to the next item, which is the consent calendar. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Thompson would move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Move and seconded to approve adoption. Oh, Commissioner Webb, I see, has a, we'll go ahead and move and seconded to approve the consent counter. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Webb?
I would like to note that item 10, which is the extremely large pass-through money, which the county accepts from OHA to fund our public health department. I don't object to any of it. I wish there had been a presentation of this IGA because it's such an important component of the services, the public health services that our public health department delivers. And this year, they, I mean, I've been the liaison to the public health department for almost three years now. So I'm well aware of all the special grants they get, et cetera. But this year, they have been so outstanding. They have risen to this unbelievable challenge. And I guess there are times when I, when, as the county manager knows, when, when, when I like to bring something out of the consent calendar because I just sort of want the public to understand certain fabulous things that the county does. So I just want to say that this is, this is incredibly important. It's like, what, $875,000, right? And I wish we could talk more about it because our public health department has been so amazingly creative over the years about getting grant money. About, I think when I was going through county college, actually, the person who made the presentation from OHA told me that he felt that Klatsep County had one of the best public health departments in the state. And that's always stayed with me and something I've been very proud to have heard. It's a complicated department. They deliver lots of different kinds of services. It's not always easy to understand. But I'm sorry that we couldn't talk about it a little bit more. I just wanted to kind of do a shout out to say, this is such a pleasure to be able to reward these fabulous staff members and which now, of course, include, what, a couple of hundred volunteers that help, that helped get the work done. So, sorry, I just, I don't mean to be pulling a Commissioner Thompson here, but, but just a shout out, just a shout out that I wish we could have spent 10 or 15 minutes, you know, going through this. But anyway, just a shout.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Webb. Appreciate your comments. And Commissioner Thompson, I always appreciate your comments too, so I, what I wanted to just, yeah, appreciate, we'll go ahead and bring, we've had a move and a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify with an "I."
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll go with Commissioner Liaison Reports. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Arch Cape Forest is a continuing passion. As we talked about briefly during the work session, Senator Johnson and Representative Weber have united behind that effort to seek approximately $2 million in state funding to, to support that effort to have a working forest in Arch Cape that also protects their watershed. I'm working also on fire issues. I'm working also to try and get water on our agenda. But we're looking at having to add it during our strategic planning effort for our next go-round to do a water inventory. The Association of Oregon Counties has a template we can use. It'll take some money. It'll take staff time and effort, so it's in our basket for consideration adding to our strategic plan. We continue to have issues in my neighborhood about short-term rentals. We continue to have issues about, I want to say, the, the planning department and how it works. My concern is that to the extent that neighbors kind of weaponize their conversations, it doesn't lead to good community building. So what we will do, I hope going forward in the planning effort and in every other endeavor that we perform as a county, will look to have good neighbors, good relationships developing all over. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks?
Good evening, everyone. I first want to start off and say how much I appreciate Ms. Steele's updates in regards to recycling in our unincorporated areas. I know that it's been a long process and it's a bit arduous, but I am appreciative that our staff is continuing to pursue it because I know folks out here in Napa will greatly appreciate that, that ability if it comes to fruition. And I, I will continue to, continue to ask about it because I think it'll be a great add-in for our unincorporated areas in our county. Secondly, a childcare update. I am really excited, like I'm jazzed about how much progress that we have had in regards to just coming up with some real clear concise plans, ideas, having our, you know, I don't know what we're supposed to call her, but she is kind of a mediator or an organizer of, of this, this process moving forward. Having Heidi assist us has been great. I'm just, I'm excited. I feel like finally we are moving, we're moving and it's forward. And, and I know both Mark and I have really enjoyed the conversations that we have been able to have regarding childcare and the future of that in our county. It's fire season. Fire season has begun. That means for all of our constituents that you must always make sure that you are burning an approved burn barrel and it is a licensed permitted burn barrel inspected by ODF. And it's a pretty simple permit process. Please just call the ODF department and you will be able to certify your burn barrel to be able to burn between early morning hours and 10:00 a.m. You must not burn past the time of 10:00 a.m. We are coming onto an extremely hot weekend. And so please, please, please be aware that even your lawnmower could start a fire. That is my PSA in regards to fire season. And also please bear with me in the future upcoming weeks because my husband's call has already started. And so we will, I will be single parenting for the summer. Woo-hoo. And on a separate note, Napa has been exercising their rights as parents recently and I'm really impressed with the process of which that they are verbalizing their cares and concerns. I feel like all voices need to be heard, especially when in regards to your children. And so I appreciate the school board's efforts to be able to hear all of the voices in regards to the school district parental concerns moving forward. And I was also impressed with the school board on making a decision that does not impact funding in their future, but also takes into account parental concerns and offers a seat at the table to those parents to have discussions in the future in the upcoming fall in regards to curriculum. That neither, that neither says that I agree or disagree, but it's mainly, I just like seeing the process. I like supporting the process. And as a parent out here in Napa, I love seeing a school board that is willing to listen and willing to work with, with parents that are concerned. Granted, things got frisky and I don't appreciate friskiness in a, in a governmental situation and especially when all of us know each other and we're neighbors. And so it circles back to, I'm very glad that we are pursuing your rules and regulations and duties and responsibilities for our governing bodies that are going to be representing our county in the future, that we are all focused on respect and decorum. And then in, within the umbrella of respect and decorum, we can, we can have good business and good things can happen. So anyhow, off my soapbox now.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, like, I'd like to thank Commissioner Banks for that. I'm not sure it's possible to say enough about the fire risks. And I sure would, I understand from the county manager had something in his report about his efforts. So, you know, I'm really glad that we're doing this and going public. The Arts Council, which has been a, a group that was put together, I think, four or five years ago, has now decided at our encouragement to become a nonprofit organization. So it will no longer be a county sanctioned advisory committee. And I think this is actually a very good effort because it will allow them to go out and get, get a more varied funding. It also allows them to do some things that a county agency can't do. So I think it's really terrific and we will, they will be incorporating as a non, I guess that's not the right word. They will be coming a nonprofit sometime in the next few months. But I hope that we can continue as the county to give them a level of financial report which will support, which will, which will keep them stable. They've really been working hard during the pandemic. They've been assembling an amazing database of artists and providers and other people interested in the arts in the county. And I think it's been a great effort. They do plan to have a summit, which they, they had the first one two years ago. They're doing, this one is going to be mostly virtual. But it was a tremendous success when they did it. And so I'll have more information for you about that. The NOHOP, the Housing Authority, as you know, which now includes all properties in Klatsep County, which were formerly the Housing Authority, had a wonderful all-day strategic planning session last Friday that has, I think, really acknowledged the changes that need to be made in the organization and will be coming forward with a strategic plan, hopefully within the next couple of months. Was a terrific exercise and, and well warranted. Finally, the, consistent with the county's strategic plan, with this board's strategic plan, Commissioner Thompson, we have actually begun work on water resiliency. I have spent a number of hours with Gail Hendrickson and we have identified a number of scientific information that we feel that we need to have concerning wetlands, water supplies, septic systems, both individual and large scale. We're, we're going to probably be spending a couple of months collecting all that data, identifying who the people are who make all that move, watershed councils, providers, et cetera, before, and then probably in around October, we will be putting together the environmental advisory group that we talked about in our strategic planning sessions. So we're on it. And you'll hear more as we go along. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that report, Commissioner Webb. Just to follow up on a couple of things, I did get this outreach and I, we all did, from Red Cross, talking about the fire danger, increased fire danger Friday through Tuesday due to the hot temperatures. They are taking some efforts to mitigate and plan in advance. But if there are things that we want to provide them or information that, that we want to impart to them, they, they ask us to, to reach out. So hopefully there will not be, you know, these wildfire danger, or at least it will be subdued this weekend, but it certainly is going to be a challenge with the hot temperatures coming up. And Commissioner Banks talked about childcare and I really appreciate her efforts to really be thoughtful and to come up with some creative ways to address some of the gaps when it comes to pay for, for teacher, for childcare providers and to look for creative ways to partner with businesses and, and other organizations, nonprofits in the community. Dan Gaffney brings a whole other experience and, and background. And we have two facilitators in Eve and Heidi that have worked with other counties and are able to provide models of what's worked in Columbia County, Tillamook County, and abandoned. And I'm just there to kind of provide info on what happened with the hospital and what we've done with Little Sprouts and, and see if there's ways to kind of take that, that little model and, and move it to, to an expansion in, in the community in general. So, once we get to the stakeholder meeting, which will be the end of next month, we'll have all kinds of input. We'll have even more ideas. So it is, it is exciting to see it coming together and hopefully we'll have three or four strong proposals within the next month and be able to move forward on, on one or more of them. So thank you, Commissioner Banks, for all your effort in that. And lastly, I just wanted to say, you know, Linda Ingrubitzin from City of Warrenton, just announced her retirement last night at the, at the City of Warrenton City Commission meeting. I, I just have such, I feel great for her that, I I um, I I just have such a, I feel great for her that I know that she's uh got things that she wants to do outside of of public service, but she's been such an excellent um, asset for Warrenton over the last twenty-seven years. I was just so blessed to be able to work with her for twelve years uh, or alongside her on the Warrenton City Commission and its mayor. And uh, she was a city recorder, then assistant city manager and then city manager for the last five years and has just been such a tremendous leader for the city and uh, an institutional, her institutional knowledge is unbeaten and unprecedented. She just remembers everything and and can access things so easily about something that happened twenty years ago and and where it's located. And she's just, uh, she's going to be missed at the city, big shoes to fill for whoever uh steps into that position. She has said that she's going to remain a volunteer at the library. So that's great that she's not totally leaving our area. Uh, but I just wanted to say how much I've appreciated um, her efforts uh in in being a a true leader in our community for for twenty-seven years. And that's all I have. I'll just turn it over to the county manager.
Thank you, Chair Quila members of the board. Um, I just want to follow up on um, on the issue that 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 Ms. Owen ha- has raised in her previous correspondence to your board. And then this evening, um, staff uh has been working to really frame this issue and part of that framing is also working with our partners o- o- over at State Parks. And so we'll be preparing a work session uh to come back and have a more detailed uh conversation with your board. Um, you know, like almost everything we do, we are, we are navigating certainly legislation, laws, um, property, ownership, and then all ultimately with the goal of really doing the right thing and to serving, you know, access um to our public beaches. And so so those, those conversations are ongoing. Um, you know, if if every conversation was easy, then we probably wouldn't be having them. But so obviously, we are having them for a reason. And so I just want to assure the board, the staff i- is working on this issue and and will be coming back um in short order to have a more detailed conversation. So um, part of our outreach, though, is to the state and um trying to try, trying to really navigate solutions um more than anything else. So so we will be back um with more information. And that's all that I have. Um, I, if I could just comment um from our Friday updates and just from the board u- updates and from staff up updates, it's really um, reminds me of how many um projects and how much activity is being um touched by this board um, and by staff. And so, you know, we wouldn't do this without immense commitment. Um, and so I just want to thank e- everybody because it truly takes a team to do this work. So thank you.
Yes, and thank you. We do have an excellent team at Clatsop County. So thanks for all your hard work. Um, we'll move on to the business agenda, which is large county road event application for the twenty-twenty-one Hood to Coast to Portland relays. And that's on page sixty-four. And Ian, are you presenting on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, good evening, commissioners and uh everyone in attendance today. My name is Ian Sisson. I am a senior planner in the Community Development Department. And as Chair Quila mentioned, I am here to present the uh large county road event permit for the twenty-twenty-one Hood to Coast and Portland to Coast Relay events. Uh, it's two events that happen at the same time uh under a single permit, just to clarify that, and is scheduled uh or proposed to be scheduled for August twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth of this year. Uh, the director of the Hood to Coast and Portland to Coast Relays, Felicia Hubbard, who is on the call today, uh, submitted the application in a timely fashion with the required fee. Community development has deemed the application complete. Uh, because the event is over four hundred participants and on county roads, the event is classified as a large county road event and requires board approval. Uh, with the exception of two thousand twenty, when the event was canceled due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, the county has routinely permitted Hood to Coast annually, um, usually as a consent item uh, under County Road Event Ordinance twenty-eleven dash ten, codified in the code uh, in chapter twelve twelve, which is included in the attachments today. The recommended conditions of approval are uh entirely the same with one exception as previous years. Uh, and the additional condition this year, which staff is recommending, is to ensure all activities occur in accordance with current public health guidelines and protocols administered by Clatsop County Public Health and the Oregon Health Authority. And as we know, those have been dynamic. And um, I know that the director has been in a constant communication with everyone involved in administering those guidelines. Uh, there were a couple of updates that Ms. Hubbard presented to me uh yesterday with regard to uh adapting to those ever-changing guidelines. So they've updated their social distancing plan and they have also updated their um, their plan for the finish line. Initially, they were going to have no event at the finish line in Seaside, but now they are planning, uh, I believe, a slightly scaled down event from what they normally do. Um, and again, Ms. Hubbard is here, um, if you had any questions for her about that. The packet includes a copy of the application, the route maps, the recommended conditions of approval, and Ms. Hubbard has addressed most of those or all of those already. Um, and those responses and and supporting documents are also included in the packet. And uh, the other item that is in there is a summary of the cost estimates for the required deposit. So uh, back to the fiscal impact, the event's fee supported, so there's no impact on the county's general fund. However, the the code requires that the commissioners establish a deposit amount to cover any costs incurred by county departments and any other public agencies involved in facilitating the event. So staff has contacted those affected agencies and requested cost estimates and put together a total. The total that was actually reimbursed last year, or sorry, in two thousand nineteen was thirty thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and six cents. The recommended agency deposit request from the applicant for the twenty-twenty-one event is thirty-one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, and the breakdown of those reimbursement estimates is included in attachment D. The requested action tonight is to approve the application with the staff recommended conditions and deposit amounts and to answer any questions the board has. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Any questions for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. I I am curious about that grand finale event in Seaside. Could you uh, make it come alive for me? Take it off the page and talk about it, please.
Uh, Commissioner Thompson and and Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I would defer to the applicant because this is pretty new to me and I I don't think I fully understand quite yet.
To be there. Sure. Um, so what we're proposing this year is a cut, a slightly scaled back version of what we would normally do for the finish party on the beach in Seaside. Um, we're talking about potentially with approval, obviously, going with uh uh, so teams will continually finish throughout the day from about seven A M. until eight P M. That's when we we cut it off. Uh, but we would have a stage still with the band, but um, you know, the beach lends itself to uh social distancing quite well. Uh, we'd still have tables, chairs, uh, do uh boxed food available for uh grab and go potentially, but we really want to promote um, folks to patronize the restaurants in downtown Seaside. Uh, so we're not going to offer, or we're proposing not to offer the normal kind of food garden that we normally do. It'd be a scaled back version. And then still have the beer and wine garden and beverages um as we normally do. We'd have some sponsor activations um on the beach with, you know, just kind of some fun activities and stretching. Um, also, of course, uh, E M T medical services uh available onsite as well. Uh, but it would be a uh uh, definitely a more low-key environment, uh, just because uh, we're not having teams finish primarily in the afternoon. It would be spread out further throughout the day on Saturday.
Thank you for that.
Good. Just a little thank you. Well, um, so Hood to Coast. Some people love it, a lot of people love it. Some people not so crazy about it. I've come to embrace it as an opportunity to practice um dealing with a catastrophic event. Because what I see as I look through your application, you've been very thorough, particularly in your communications to emphasize structure and training and accountability and fundamentally being well-behaved visitors. So I've seen you uh steadily increase in that year after year after year. I really appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that our community agencies get to practice dealing with large um, a large influx of people who don't often come. That's extremely useful for our community. I think you're probably making a decent profit or you wouldn't keep doing this. I think you probably also have a great passion for it. So I appreciate all of that. I appreciate too that you have addressed the concerns of the seaside merchants, that you don't take away business from them, but you're balancing, giving people just a little something, but really wanting to see the local businesses flourish. There was, there was some unruly behavior. What, what do you contemplate, especially given uh COVID has really kind of thrown things off track sometimes with people? Are you prepared to deal with unruly behavior? Could you talk about that a little, please?
Um, yes. So in regards to, are you referencing um potentially like unvaccinated folks not wearing masks? Or are you uh referring more to like folks drinking, just so I can clarify that?
The whole gamut. I mean, you know that people are enormously creative when it comes to making mischief.
Yes. So yeah, from a broad perspective, uh, we have a pretty comprehensive plan as far as our rules and penalties with the race that we try and communicate heavily throughout the uh racing season via social media, uh, email, and then our website as well as our handbook. So we have a list of um very specific rules that uh if teams do not adhere to, depending on the severity of the infraction, uh, I mean, teams actually do t- take it pretty seriously as far as uh, we have thirty-minute penalties, sixty-minute penalties, or disqualifications if we feel that it's necessitated. And so if uh something happens along the race course where um an infraction were to occur, uh, if a team member is to see this, they they report it to uh the next exchange, which has one of our staff members. Or if it's one of our staff members who witnesses the infraction, uh, we write down the team number, uh, we get ahold of the team directly, uh, talk with them, see if it's something that can be remedied. If not, then they are disqualified uh from the race. And in past years, we've averaged anywhere from between uh fifteen to twenty disqualifications. Uh, and that can be from anything from uh too loud of music, you know, after ten o'clock at night, which is when we say no more. Um, obviously to be respectful to communities we're we're coming through. Or it might be um, you know, a van where the decorations are deemed inappropriate. Um, things just kind of of that nature. So we do take it pretty seriously and we uh have a pretty uh robust system for reporting and dealing with with folks who can be unruly, although I would say for the vast majority, uh, folks are like, like you guys have witnessed, are pretty darn good. It's just a very small amount of people that uh, you know, we have to kind of clamp down on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions for the uh staff or applicant, Commissioner Bangs?
Um, as we all know, that August is the height of fire season, um, and we will have such a high influx of visitors um, here at our coast. And I'm just curious, um, what avenue or are you going to pursue an avenue in order to help mitigate um behaviors that could increase our fire danger? Uh, especially since there's going to be camping, there's going to be um, just where they're running past private lands, state lands, um, um, our, our natural resources. And so what process, if there is one, will you be pursuing in order to educate the visitors?
Yeah. So great question, obviously, with what's going on with the the heat right now uh and continuing through the summer. Uh, so where we're uh coming through, starting into Clatsop County, you know, is that Miss Birkenfeld area. Uh, so we're, we work with every fire uh district and department, as Ian knows and as you guys know as well. Uh, so we work very closely with each of the rural fire departments as well as City of Seaside Fire uh for a very robust uh communications and emergency disaster plan that we have an effect for uh, the entire race course as well as Clatsop County. But uh, for example, Miss Birkenfeld, uh, we hire them to have a two-thousand gallon water tanker truck out at uh Exchange twenty-four, which is the start of the Miss Birkenfeld private course. Um, and then later on in the, in the race course, uh, if we're talking like uh, Exchange, I would say Exchange twenty-nine and Exchange thirty-five. So again, these probably don't mean anything to you, but um, you know, they're kind of spaced out throughout Clatsop County. Um, we have two other uh two thousand and a fourth thou- I think it's a four thousand uh gallon water tanker station for the duration of the race uh at those different locations, in addition to uh their rural fire departments being on call and um at the ready. So uh, that in addition to the fact that uh we started requiring about five years ago, all of our staff along the entire race course to carry a shovel uh and a um, sorry, uh, fire extinguisher, blanked on it. Uh, so they're, they're out there, uh, and then we are communicating to the public and to our participants about fire danger. We really don't start to ramp that up until August because we want it to be present and at the top of their minds. Uh, but it's a, it's a kind of a methodical uh communication plan that makes it very, very clear that you know, this is high fire danger season, these are the steps that we're taking, and this is what we expect to do as well.
Okay. So there is an education process that you're following with all of your participants. Um, I appreciate all of the the backside, you know, prep in regards to tankers, et cetera. Um, but I I I also, I was just wanting to confirm that there was an educational process in regards to the participants because it's an opportunity for us and for you um in order to do some prevention.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Any other questions from the commission, either of staff or the applicant? Any other further comment from staff? County Health.
No additional comments for me.
Comment? Nope.
So, Mr. Bangs, I would move to approve the county road event application for the twenty-twenty-one Hood to Coast, Portland to Coast relays as submitted with the staff recommended conditions listed in exhibit C and deposit amount of thirty-one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars.
Second. Have a second. Moved and seconded to a county road event application for the twenty-twenty-one Hood to Coast, Portland to Coast relays as submitted with staff recommended conditions listed in exhibit C and deposit amount of thirty-one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye? All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much and have a great event. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Felicia, for coming tonight.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four collective bargaining agreement between Clatsop County and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFME, Local twenty-seven forty-six. And that's on page one thirty-six. And Kelly Stiles is here to present. Kelly?
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Kelly Stiles, Human Resources Director. And in front of you tonight is the newly negotiated and recently ratified collective bargaining agreement between the county and our AFME bargaining group. I just want to first thank both um the bargaining team of AFME and um uh, the county's bargaining team and and management as well for being active participants throughout this entire process. We started negotiations on March eleventh and concluded negotiations at the end of May. And we got a lot done. And we got a lot done. We did some virtually and then we were able to do more in person, which facilitated kind of an easier flow of sharing of ideas and conversations. So, besides that, the key changes in this contact versus the existing contacts are laid out in front of you in the agenda summary. So, I'll just open it up, questions if you have any.
Any questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Less of a question, more of a comment. There was a remarkable lack of drama, stress, and conflict that appeared on the outside. Was it really that tropicetic? I mean, this is the smoothest negotiation I've been observant to.
It was an extremely successful negotiation on both sides of the table.
Commissioner Webb?
Kelly. Kelly and I have a, have to do a, what's it, great cookies today. Thank you. It's worth going to Exchange Street because Kelly shows up once in a while with the best homemade cookies you've ever seen in your life. Kind of a broad overview of what issues are most important to our ASME employees. I mean, I, you know.
Sure. I think one of, one of the key topics of discussion was certainly the healthcare benefits and discussing how those benefits are utilized and how the cost of the benefits impact not just the members, but all county employees. So, that was a key topic of discussion. And just making sure that the other key point that was really critical was discussing staffing needs. And we talked about the use of temporary and casual employees, which with this pandemic, as my agenda summary says, both sides of the table came to an agreement that, yes, we do need to have some flexibility in our staffing, but we also need to be there to the bargaining unit employees. And that's how we reached the compromise that we did regarding casual staffing. Those were the kind of the critical pieces in the conversation. And I would just say again, healthcare was a regular topic of discussion.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if you don't have any, I will be for a motion.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that the board approves a 2021 to 2024 Collective Bargaining Agreement in Clatsop County and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME Local 2746, and authorize the person to sign the agreement.
I second. I second.
Okay, moved and seconded. The board approves the 2021-2024 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Clatsop County and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME Local 2746, and authorize the chairperson to sign the agreement. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye. Eye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries and that is approved. We'll move on to the next item, which is the Cost of Living Adjustment for Unrepresented Employees. That's on page 251. Kelly?
Well, good evening again. So, this is an annual agenda item that comes in front of you this time every year and it's regarding cost of living adjustment for non-represented employees. In our collective bargaining agreement, we have language specifying cost of living amounts for represented employees of a minimum of a 2.5% COLA to a 4.5% COLA based on the May-to-May CPI. This year's CPI was 4.7% from a May-to-May lookback period. So, therefore, with the collective bargaining agreement, the 4.5% ceiling would apply. In this, in this agenda summary, what staff is bringing to you is approving a 4.5% COLA for those employees not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, which include our management staff, unrepresented staff, and contract employees. So, I will take any questions you might have.
Any questions? Commissioner Webb?
I just have a, I just have a comment. I thought the that the staff presentation of the the CPI calculations was really good. I, it was very understandable and straightforward. Thank you. I've had to deal with a lot of those. It was a good job.
Do we have a motion?
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that the board approve the attached resolution and order implementing a cost of living adjustment of 4.5% for Clatsop County Unrepresented Confidential Casual and Contracted Employees effective July 1, 2021.
I second.
Moved and seconded to approve the attached resolution and order implementing a cost of living adjustment of 4.5% for Clatsop County Unrepresented Confidential Casual and Contracted Employees effective July 1, 2021. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye? All those opposed? Okay, carries. And that will be approved. Next is, that is it, actually. So, we have postponed the Planning Commission appointment to later date. We'll have an opportunity to meet with applicants and ask questions and we'll do so probably in next after we have an opportunity to meet in joint session with the existing Planning Commission. If that's, that's what I understand. Okay. Anything for the good of the order? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you very much. Good meeting. Have a rest of your evening. See you soon.
Good night.